You ready, Mike? I need a minute. I can... Sure. No problem. Take your time.
Okay, if the board members, please make sure you have your microphones on. We're gonna get started. Okay, good evening. It is 6:30 PM on Monday, September 22nd, 2025. I'd like to call to order the Village of Brookfield Village Board Meeting. Would everyone please join me in a Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike Weaver, roll call, please.
Yes. Trustee Ketchmark.
Here.
Trustee Whitehead.
Here.
Trustee Hendricks.
Here.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Here.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Here.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Here.
President Garvey.
Here. Thank you, Mike. We have two appointments tonight. The first is, we're here to swear in Police Officer Jeremiah Alvarez. So I'd ask Officer Alvarez to please come forward with all your family. Come up to our village clerk. Mike Melendez is here. Come on, everybody up. And again, plenty of cameras here. Faces. Come closer. Come on up. Don't be shy. I'm Mike. I think it's about to get to take a video. Yeah. We can... All right, we're good. Yeah, we'll get it. Give it to President Garvey. All right. You ready?
Yes.
All right. Jeremiah, please raise your right hand. Repeat after me. I Jeremiah Alvarez.
I Jeremiah Alvarez.
Having been promoted.
Have been promoted.
To the office of police officer.
To the office of police officer.
In the Village of Brookfield.
In the Village of Brookfield.
In the County of Cook.
The County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations. Gotta sign one spot to make it official. All right, here. This one. All right, hey, congratulations. Thanks for what you do. Which one? Why don't you take two? It's a long meeting, but don't get involved at the same time. You're welcome. Officer, you ought to introduce your, uh, your family here. If you want, turn around and face the audience so they can see you. Appreciate it.
This might look like my brother, but it is my name. My mother, my dad, my grandparents from Texas, my aunt from California, my beautiful girlfriend Corelli, my brother Jacob, my niece Amari, sorry, and my mother, Cora.
Get a few pictures here, and then Chief's gonna say a few words. All right, if you could all stay up here for a moment. Chief just likes to say, speak for about a half hour or so.
I promised Jeremiah, this will be really quick, is he's a, he's a very humble and modest officer and individual, as family can attest, and so... But I just wanna say, you know, again, good night, or good, good evening, President Garvey, the board trustees, and everyone here. We want to introduce Officer Jeremiah Alvarez to the department officially as our fully sworn officer of probation. Very proud of Jeremiah and the time that he's been, the short time that he's been here. Got to know him, actually, we had a good conversation today, and I got to learn a little bit more about his history before coming here to join our department and the village. After high school, he joined the Army National Guard. He's actually in the Special Forces as a Staff Sergeant. Very proud of that. It's incredible accomplishment, and he continues to serve, and so that is fantastic, as I also understand his girlfriend. Also has been, as an electrician, industrial, before this as well, so just an individual with a lot of talents. Grown up and lives in the Chicagoland area, and, uh, and just in our conversation, I just think the sky's the limit for Jeremiah here, Officer Alvarez, that is. And very proud of him. Can't wait to see where he's gonna go with his career, and so glad to see you here at this meeting right now. Congratulations, sir.
Okay, congratulations. You're welcome to stick around for the rest of the meeting, but you don't have to. If you'd like to go somewhere, it celebrates. Very nice of you all to come out. And thank you to the members of the Police Department that are here to support him, and the Police and Fire Commission. We appreciate it. Okay, and we have one more appointment. I'd entertain a motion to reappoint CP Hall II to the Board of Fire and Police Commission for a term expiring September 26th, 2028.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Ketchmark, second by Trustee Kaluzny. Any questions or comments on the reappointment? CP thought somehow when he got off the Village Board that he was gonna be sitting at home at nights, but we wouldn't let that happen. He served the village in so many ways since his time on the Village Board, and you'll see him out there every Saturday morning at the farmer's market and everywhere else, but we thank you. This is a very important position, we know, and we appreciate you, all your hard work on this, so... Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. CP, could you come up and be sworn in? Re sworn in?
CP, repeat after me, please. I CP Hall II.
I CP Hall II.
Having been reappointed.
Having been reappointed.
To the office of Board of Fire and Police Commissioner.
To the position of Board and Fire Police Commissioner.
In the Village of Brookfield.
In the Village of Brookfield.
In the County of Cook.
In the County of Cook.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
The Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office.
The duties of the office.
Of Board of Fire and Police Commissioner.
Of Board of Fire and Police Commissioner.
According to the best of my abilities.
According to the best of my abilities.
Thank you again, CP, for continuing to serve our village, and we really appreciate your expertise.
Thank you, CP.
CP, thank you.
Thanks so much, CP. Thanks.
Okay, that ends the items we have on our appointments and presentations. At this point in the meeting, I will open it up to public comment. Is there anyone on my left side that has any public comment at this time? Hearing none. Is there anyone on my right side that has any public comment? Okay, hearing no public comment. We'll move on to reports to special committees, please. Trustee Naromatsu.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to improve the corporate warrant dated September 22nd, 2025, in the amount of $3,201,794.51.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made by Trustee Naromatsu, second by Trustee Hendricks. Any highlights?
Uh, just about 1.9 million in infrastructure projects, lots of resigns, all those kinds of things.
Do any board members have any questions or comments about any items on the warrant? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't have any updates from Public Works, except to remind everybody that you can report any issues to see click fix. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Naromatsu. Trustee Gilhuli, Chamber of Commerce?
Yes. Several things to update on the chamber. The 60-to-win program is underway. If anyone's not familiar, this year, the pulling of the names and the numbers is a little bit different this year. They're choosing a different chamber member location to do the drawing each week. So this week's drawing is going to be at Sloggers on 47th Street, this Thursday, September 25th, at 5:00 PM. Everyone is welcome to attend and watch that drawing. They're then posting the winners on Facebook and on their, the chamber website. And you can see all of the past winners there as well. So each week, if you wanna look out for, for where they're gonna do it the following week, you can also go to the chamber website and Facebook to view those locations, if you want to be part of that. Other places that have hosted so far, this was the fourth drawing. It's also been, the drawings have also happened at the shops at Progress Park, at Irish Times, and at Tischler's. So they're making their rounds around town each week, which is great. Next thing to update on is the Grand Avenue Block Party. This is a new event that the chamber is hosting. This is, um, this Friday, September 26th. It is right here on Grand Boulevard in the Business District, and there'll be crafts, face painting, music, games, a lot of family fun. It's free entry, and this is from 5:00 to 8:00 PM. So just show up on, on Grand and patronize some of our businesses and have some fun at the same time. Let's see, the, and that is sponsored by a number of businesses, local businesses as well. There will also be a ribbon cutting coming up. So Mama Barone's, which has been on Broadway for a while, is changing hands. It is moving from father to daughter. And so they are doing a ribbon cutting on September 30th at 4:30 PM, and that's 9209 Broadway. So everyone is welcome to attend that. We don't have the date for the ribbon cutting yet, but Bill's Place on Ogden Avenue is just working out the details and when they're gonna do their ribbon cutting, so keep an eye out for that. But they're ready to go, and, um, and we're excited to have them here in Brookfield.
They're open for business already.
They're open for business, yes. They're just, yes, just waiting on a date for the official celebratory ribbon cutting. Also coming up, uh, let's see, going sequentially here, we have the next chamber board meeting, regular meeting, is at noon on the lower level of the library on October 13th. Their meetings are on the second Monday of each month, the same location. Following that, there'll be the October Business Lunch for any, any business as part of the chamber in Brookfield. That's October 16th at noon, and it's also gonna be hosted at the library. Following that, we have Monsters on Main Street. I'll let Trustee Ketchmark go into a little bit more details on, from the village's side, but that also sponsored by the chamber is Saturday, October 25th. And then finally, last but definitely not least, the farmer's market in its 18th season is still going on every Saturday from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM in the west side of Village Hall parking lot, and those will continue through October 25th. So a lot happening this fall, and I hope everyone will come out and be part of some of those activities. And I know we've said it before, but Grand Avenue looks wonderful, it's really turned out. I know there's a lot of street work still going on here and there, but access to all those businesses is wide open. I hope that everyone is back out patronizing them. And that ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Gilhuli. Trustee Hendricks, planning and zoning, library?
Library Board Meeting will be on this Wednesday at 6:30 at the library. At the same time, the Plan Commissioners will be attending a training, uh, best practices session with Riverside. And then the Plan Commission Meeting will be on Thursday at 7:00 in this room. That ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Hendricks. Trustee Ketchmark, Administration, Economic Development?
The EDC Commission met last Wednesday. Two topics. The rental registration had continued discussion, and the commission has a limited recommendation coming forward to the board. We'll be discussing it our next meeting. And then there was continued discussion on branding and hiring a consultant for that. That too has come forward with discussion, or with approval for the general idea. No details on that. That'll be left up to us to discuss at our next meeting. Nothing additional on Monsters on Main Street, other than October 25th from 12:00 to 3:00, and hopefully another beautiful day. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Ketchmark. Trustee Whitehead, Parks and Recreation?
The Parks and Recreation Commission met on Tuesday, September 16th. The commission discussed budget needs for the next year, and they're thinking about new items to give away at parades and community events. Parks and Rec koozies were a leading contender, so stay tuned for those. Of course, with the school year underway, preschool and before and after-school programs are underway and going well. Some spots are still available. If you're interested, you can click on the Register for Parks and Recreation Programs button on the Village homepage to learn more and to sign up for your family. The second and final Music on Grand, Music on Grand of the season is this Saturday, the 27th, so we have the Block Party on Friday, and then the Music on Grand the following evening, headlined by Radio Gaga. They'll be starting at 8:00, so there is another time circulating, but it is 8:00 PM, so make sure you're in your seats for that one. Also, we have Final Say at 6:30, and Easily Distracted at 4:30. So you've got the music on Saturday night, and before the music, of course, you're gonna go to the duck race. Brookfield Duck Race is noon on Saturday. We've got 3,000 ducks that will be dropping into the creek at the Bridge on Washington, and they'll make, make their way down to the finish line at the canoe launch, right here behind Village Hall. Sales are going well. Thank you for everybody who has purchased a duck and for help sell ducks. It's a real, takes a village to put this event on, and all of you have been helpful. There are still a few more ducks available, so we will be selling ducks at the farmer's market leading up to the race on Saturday. You can also go online at tinyurl.com/brookfieldducks and scoop up some of the few remaining ducks before Saturday. Of course, all the proceeds support the Brookfield Parks and Rec Foundation, which raises money to support low-income families and offers them reduced fees for parks programs throughout the year. The commission's next meeting is Tuesday, October 21st, at 6:30 here at Village Hall.
Thank you, Trustee Whitehead. Trustee Kaluzny, Conservation, Beautification?
Yes, the Conservation Commission has not met since our last meeting. However, they are hard at work, still planning Meet the Creek, which is on October 4th, a date that hasn't been mentioned yet, because there's so many other things happening on weekends, but on the 4th, you should go to Meet the Creek. It'll be from 1:00 to 4:00, an hour later than it usually is. Their next meeting is tomorrow night, September 23rd, at 6:00 PM here in this room. The Beautification Commission had just, I think, was the August Garden recognition was just voted on. We're getting in touch with the winner homeowner, and you'll see that hopefully on social media and in some newsletters later this week. We are still accepting nominations for fascinating plant gardens in your front yard for, through the 30th. So get your submissions in, and then we'll be awarding that in, at, in the beginning of October, then followed by spooky decorations. So you, if you don't have a cool garden, but you're really great at Halloween decorating, you should submit your Halloween decorations in October, and we'll have some voting online from the public on that as well. Their next meeting is not until November 4th at 6:30 PM. That ends my report.
Thank you, Trustee Kaluzny. The Solid Waste Agency or the WCMC have not met since our last meeting. There is the annual meeting of the WCMC, the Board of Directors. Appointments are at the annual dinner, which is October 24th in Rosemont. I will be attending as a member of the Executive Board, and any board member that is free and available and wants to go is welcome to attend also. Just let Tim know. Brookfield Zoo, there, they continue to work with us on upcoming events. The coordination is very important with all the construction and things going on, but we know that there's certain events coming up, like Boo with the Zoo and other things, that the communication with them has just been excellent and helps lessen the impact on our neighborhoods, and we appreciate that line of communication going forward, so... That ends my report at this point, so I would entertain a motion to pass the Omnibus Agenda.
So moved.
Second. The motion was made by Trustee Kaluzny, second by Trustee Gilhuli. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. We're gonna move on to the items under Regular Business. The first item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution authorizing a contract to Sports Fields Incorporated for the Ellard Park Field 4 Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Gilhuli, second by Trustee Whitehead. This was discussed a couple committee meetings ago. Brookfield Little League came forward with the request to make field improvements to expand the use of the fields for different age and ability levels, and it's very creative thinking. We appreciate them coming forward to turn Field 4 into something that even more people can use. I think we all know baseball and softball is more popular than ever, and we dedicate a lot of time and field space to that, but Little League was very understanding that we also have other events and sports and things we use our parks for. Their creative thinking in bringing this forward will allow more field use for different age levels and ability levels, including the challengers program, which, as you heard, has really grown in popularity. So they did their research, they, there's a couple companies that specialize in this, but Sports Fields Incorporated is someone that they're very familiar with, and they came in as the lowest qualified one, so we're asking to award it to them. And this work will be done this fall, is that correct? If approved. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And the next item is related to that. I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution to enter into a reimbursement agreement with Brookfield Little League for Field 4 project executed by Sports Fields Incorporated.
So moved. Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Naromatsu, second by Trustee Gilhuli. Because the village owns the fields, but the Brookfield Little League has graciously offered to pay for these improvements, they, we have to, the contract has to be with us, and we'll get reimbursement from Brookfield Little League, and this agreement just memorializes that. Any questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Again, thank you to Brookfield Little League for coming forward with this. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution for a contract between the village and White and Company for providing engineering services, construction documents, and construction oversight for the Ellard Park Field 1 project in the amount of $35,000.
So moved.
Second.
Motion was made by Trustee Kaluzny, second by Trustee Naromatsu. As you will recall, Brookfield entered into a partnership with Riverside Brookfield High School, School District 208, and Western Conference to plan some improvements. We talked about this during the previous budget cycle, and these are the first steps in towards making that project happen. Scheduling this was very difficult. Luke worked with the high school, the contractors, and to figure the right time, because we didn't want to cut short the summer baseball season, but to get it all done, they canceled their fall ball season. To get some of it done now, might have to do some more work in the spring, but this involves the demolition, but we needed White's services for this, so this is to award the contract to them. Any questions or comments from the board?
Just on this, between this item and the next item, you know, Phase 1 is set to be done this fall, and the dugouts would be completed this fall?
Correct. Demolition of the dugouts will be completed and reconstruction as well.
And the backstop?
Backstop fencing, netting. The only items in Phase 2 for spring are construction of the press and storage, and the drainage, addressing the drainage issues.
But we do have time yet for White to put together the documents and go out for bid for this?
Correct.
Okay.
And the, the storage area, the scorers booth in that storage area, just there's some drainage things that the MWRD requires permits for, so we're trying to plan that so we can get that going first thing in the spring, but they should be ready to start. As you know, the high school baseball season starts sometimes as early as the middle of March, so the field will be available. They might not have the scorers booth or storage area, but what the plan was, staffs worked very hard to try and make this happen, so there's no interruption in the spring season. Construction could still happen while they're going through their schedule. Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Ketchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Naromatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And as Trustee Ketchmark indicated, this next item is related to that. I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution for a cost-sharing agreement by and between the Village of Brookfield, the Board of Education of School District Number 208, and the Brookfield Babe Ruth Western Conference Incorporated for the Ellard Park Field 1 Improvement Project.
So moved.
Second.
The motion was made by Trustee Kaluzny, second by Trustee Gilhuli. Again, this relates to the cost reimbursement for this with our partners in this, and I know the board is well aware of this, but I hope the public realizes, these are improvements that the village probably would not be able to undertake ourselves this year with the other planned budget items, but the cooperation between the various groups, including School District 208 and Western Conference, we can partner together and make one big improvement in project and have more people use the field and have more activities, including the high school, by kind of partnering together, so it serves the residents very well, so thank you to all the parties involved. Questions or comments?
I would like to ask, is this included in this year's budget or next year's budget, or a combination of both?
Correct. This was a project that was discussed at the budget workshop. The board did approve the budget allocation for this year, up to $100,000. That is what we are contributing towards construction. RB High School, same amount as well, and contributing additionally is Western Conference.
Thank you.
Clarification, we, the village, is paying for the design and engineering though, too, correct?
Correct.
Bless you. Other questions or comments from the board?
And that portion was also budgeted?
Within the cost-share agreement, we do have availability for any contingencies, whether in the construction or design-engineering phase. Part of the $100,000 construction will include the design-engineering with approved budget allocation for this year. Because it is broken up into two phases, we will have to budget additionally for Phase 2, moving those funds into 2026 requests.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to the next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution authorizing the execution of a professional design engineering service agreement with Edwin Hancock Engineering Company for the 2026 lead water service replacement project in the amount of $150,400,000.
So moved. Second.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. $150,400, sorry.
You just picked Derek's name.
And Doug almost had a heart attack. Okay, so, correct amount, I'm sorry, $150,400 for design engineering services to Hancock Engineering. So, is that the motion you intended to make?
Yes, yes.
Second.
So, the motion was made by trustee Narumatsu, second by trustee Hendricks. Questions or comments on this?
I was curious on this one. So, the project currently wouldn't be funded per the IEP A intended funding list. So, when, when will we know if bypass funding will be available?
Typically, the IEP A announces bypass funding in January, and the tough situation we're in is when they announce that, we need to have our design engineering 80, 90% done in order to obtain it, so we go ahead and do it. I will say, we didn't make the list, but we're like second or third on the list of projects that is far as scoring on, on the bypass list. So, they go by score, and if you're ready. So, our EPA project manager feels it's likely that there will be bypass funding again for us this year.
Okay. And then I guess the next question would be that if, if we don't achieve that bypass funding, we still then will have the plans available to go for the funding the year after, right?
Exactly. Shelf-ready plans, yes.
Okay. And, and is that bypass funding would be the same amount that we requested for regular funding, or would it be a portion of that?
It should be the same amount. It depends how much. So, we requested $12 million. We did $8,024, $10,025. We requested $12 million. Again, as long as they have that amount of money, which they have in the past two years, then we would get the full amount, yes.
Thanks.
And considering the bypass funding, do they take into account past success of the village in completing projects and going through there?
They have indicated that. That's part of why they've been so cooperative with us when we've asked for change orders, little extension when we find a few more, so yes.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you, Derek. The next item, I'd entertain a motion to pass an ordinance establishing a line of credit with the First National Bank of Brookfield for an amount not to exceed $1,500,000.
So moved. Second.
The motion was made by trustee Narumatsu, second by trustee Kaluzny. As the staff memo explains, and I think most people are aware, the Cook County tax bills are still not out, and there's no specific date, even when they're expected to go out. We've heard various stories, and actually Treasurer Papas called me several weeks ago, a month ago, and said it might be December before the tax bills go out. As the board is well aware, we rely on property taxes to fund approximately 40% of our general fund operating expenditures. So, you know the way it works. If the property tax bills aren't going out, property tax bills aren't being paid, and we don't get our property tax receipts from the county, but we still have bills to pay and things. We do have reserves. We're in a good financial position, but we need to have this line of credit available just to help get through the end of the year. And First National Bank has offered us a very favorable line of credit after staff research. So, that's the reason behind this. Other questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. The final item, I'd entertain a motion to pass a resolution to extend the lease agreement between village of Brookfield and the First National Bank of Brookfield for 9202 Broadway for the Brookfield Shops program from three years to five years.
So moved. Second.
The motion was made by trustee Gilhuli, second by trustee Kaluzny. It's hard to believe that the, fully of the shops is, you know, coming to an end in December, but it's obviously been, we believe it's been a very successful program. With the creative placemaking grant that we received, makes it even more exciting. We're making attempts to make this current lease from three years to five years with the ability to extend it further as needed for the program. It's mutually agreed between the parties. The First National Bank has been an excellent partner with us on many projects, and this is another one where they're really helping the village grow, so we appreciate that. Questions or comments from the board? Okay, hearing done. Roll call, please.
Trustee Catchmark.
Aye.
Trustee Whitehead.
Aye.
Trustee Hendricks.
Aye.
Trustee Narumatsu.
Aye.
Trustee Gilhuli.
Aye.
Trustee Kaluzny.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. That ends the item we have on a regular business. Tim, do you have a manager's report?
Yes, just one item. President Garvey, good news and bad news on the construction front. The good news is First Avenue ended. The construction work and the complete closure of that street ended one day early last week. Traffic was open both ways on Friday, so we're happy to hear that. The bad news is, is now Ogden will be in, to our west, right outside of our limits, will be closed to one lane of traffic in each direction starting tomorrow. That project was actually originally scheduled to start today. We contacted, I asked the police chief, I go, are we getting any traffic complaints today? And he verified that, well, they actually hadn't started today. They're starting tomorrow. So, tomorrow, just west of our village limits on Ogden, over the bridge, over the railroad tracks, traffic will be limited to one lane in each direction, so there will be tie-ups. I would recommend you all avoid Ogden for the next, the project's going to go to early December, so this will be a several-week-long process, so stay tuned.
Thank you, Tim. And it was, it's been a difficult time with the First Avenue project, but I think with the work that staff did and working with neighboring communities, we were able to minimize the negative impact. But I don't know if people realize how close we're to having an even bigger problem, because we got a frank text or call from Tim about that we just received notice at the same time that IDOT intended to close Ogden Avenue one-way on the same day they were closing First Avenue, which was a detour route. So, Tim made a lot of phone calls, a lot of frantic phone calls, and a lot of just, I think people, there was a lot of comments on social media about, doesn't anybody talk? None of these projects are the village of Brookfield, but they obviously impact all of us. The residents of Hollywood were severely impacted by the First Avenue project, and this project is going to impact people, the two of them at the same time. Somehow, they didn't talk, they didn't figure it out, but Tim was able to convince them to delay the Ogden Avenue project one more week. And it wasn't easy, but I thank you for that, Tim, because it made things a little bit easier. It will be messy. It's, you know, basically East Avenue to LaGrange Road, that's going to be one lane each way. You don't have to avoid Ogden completely, just avoid that part of it, maybe going over the bridge, but still patronize our businesses on Ogden Avenue, just like we did on Grand Boulevard. Still go out of your way to go there, just, you know, plan ahead of time, and hopefully that project finishes on time, like the one on First Avenue does. We're not going to hold our breath, but realize that we're doing everything we can to minimize the impact, so. Thank you, Tim. Okay, that ends the items we have on the village board agenda. So, at 7:06 PM, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn the village board.